Twenty-second budget meeting to order. First on the agenda is pledge led to a night by a board member, Tammy Sharp.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. All right. Are you going into this, or is...
Okay, our first side here is our general budget, detailed revenue sheet. First page there, you will look at that, and that in the second page, you will see that the difference between the revenues and expenditures is twenty-two million, twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Me and Mr. Sandvig, very detailed report here is all asking.
I do anticipate typically, well, typically we will see some uptick in the property tax as other properties come onto the roll in the next month or so. But it's the page behind the agenda, two pages, the next two pages behind the agenda. For the revenue, you're welcome. And so, but half a million, a million, two million, we don't know at this point. Typically, we have been in better shape in, other than last year with the reappraisal, than we, that number doesn't change as much as it used to historically typically. Ms. Nolan and I, probably, sales tax may have hit today. April receipts for March, we look at that on a monthly basis. Those are the main two that could change. We could see some shift in our B and P, hopefully upward, as we get into the May and June estimates on that. But we're probably, yeah.
Looking at the second page here, kind of, the revenue, uh, ninety-nine million, seven five thousand.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And the line below that, I include, I debated whether or not print it tonight, but for local maintenance of effort before amendments, look in the third, second, I'm sorry, second and third columns of numbers, that one fifty-two, basically, three, that is what we are currently budgeting. And one of the maintenance, local maintenance of effort tests is just the county beat that number in next year's budget. This number will be going up as we amend 2018, 2019 revenues. We have seen some growth, and they will be going up a bit more. That is the only maintenance of effort test in the GP budget. The federal budget, you get down to per pupil expenditures and items like that in the GP, you do not.
Probably those budgets, one hundred and sixteen million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and dollars.
Yes. Last year, we wound up going into ending fund balance by fifteen million dollars. That is a, we have enough in our fund balance right now, and with, your fund balance will go up by any unbudgeted growth in revenues and any budgeted expenditures that you don't pay, don't have to pay out. We will have some growth in that number. After we look at April numbers next week, I'll be happier looking at that number, we will have enough, but if you don't do something to make sure it, that is one-time money. And we have to be very careful about the size of that deficit. If there's any kind of downturn in the economy, the local sales tax will drop first. And that, those have been some of the times when we have to go, have had to have gone in and freeze expenditures. Some of the years, we got criticism for cutting back on our technology expenditures. That was one of the areas we could cut back on, and we had to quite a bit in the last economic downturn. Yeah. It just, yeah, the property taxes tend to hold stable or go up in times like that slightly in our local economy because we've been growing throughout even the downturn. The sales tax will plummet quickly and recover, as it starts recovering.
Mr. Sandvig, I've got a couple of questions. Help me understand the scope of this total federal government.
All that is, is the ROTC reimbursement, or any position, we have one position, maybe two positions that are, for which we get no federal reimbursement. Most of our ROTC cadet corps positions, we get half of the, they call it the MIP. We agree to, they are on retirement, they get some money paid by the Department of Defense, and we agree to at least pay that MIP amount, and we pay their benefits. So that helps support the ROTC.
Okay, so these dollars where it...
This is not the federal programs budget at all.
Okay, 'cause where it says total federal government, that doesn't apply to the federal dollars we get, like for Title I or Fed or anything else?
Right, those are all, right, when the consolidated plan is brought forward, that's where you budget for those. And then we also have federal cafeteria reimbursements in Fund 143.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On the driver's ed money?
Yes, sir.
Are we having that at Rockvale, huh?
Yes, sir, we are. We have already purchased two vehicles for Rockvale's program that will be delivered in June so we can get the brakes installed and have them ready to go.
I'm sure we could set that ninety minutes required.
Mm-hmm.
Elementary and, there's still, maybe, it's not final.
The two blue items, I have a board member blue.
Before we do that, if, once they get through this, I'd like to transportation.
On page four or five, the transportation set where I have added at last meeting, that should have been on page five of five. I think this is three versions, I left it on this today.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Urloch. I stepped in a few minutes late for the last meeting, I heard your discussion, discussing transportation, bus contractor pay, budget. Wanted to put together some information and kind of compare what we do compared to district similar size, if you would. General information, we offer transportation to all our students, approximately forty-seven thousand, making us the third largest transportation department in the state. Knoxville is larger, has sixty thousand students, we get to that, but they don't transport quite as many students as we do because of the walk zone. All the other districts do have a one- to two-mile walk zone that they receive funding for from the federal government for any student that lives a mile and a half or more. We get that funding as well, but we provide transportation to those students included. The other thing that differentiates our transportation department and others is we require contractors to have eighty-nine or ninety-passenger bus. That capacity costs a lot of extra money. The difference between that size and a seventy-eight passenger is a little over fifteen thousand dollars for a new bus. This reduces the number of contracts we need. I'll compare that to some coming up in the next slides. But for my comparison, I use Knox, Hamilton, Williamson for comparison, and wanted to use the last five years. That's the best data I could get to show what our increases to our contractors have been, along with the increases that they've had in their budget as well. In 2015, there was no increase across the board, in 2016, two point six, followed by two point five, the next two years, and then two percent last year. Increases for our contractors are not the same as employees because of the cost. Their new equipment is a hundred and eight thousand dollars. They will buy used. I spent almost an hour today looking for a used ninety-passenger vehicle, bus, I couldn't find one. I found seventy-one passenger, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, up to eighty-four, but there's very few ninety-passenger buses that are used out there. So our contractors need their choices to purchase a new one. That cost is going up eight percent. The maintenance, the labor rate to work on their buses have gone up seventeen, tires eighteen, and then driver pay, that's the other thing I hear a lot about, has increased approximately twenty percent just in the last five years, which causes our drivers, our contractors, to be always looking for drivers. The first comparison is Williamson County. They're very similar in size to us and use a completely different model. They use a employee base. They own their vehicles, they have employees as bus drivers. They offer transportation to all their students as well, which is just over forty thousand, and they do so with two hundred and thirty-nine buses. We use two seventy-three, so we get, we get pretty good bang for a buck there. The total budget that they have, eighteen million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That equates to seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars spent per bus compared to our cost, the sixty-nine thousand. Extrapolating that out, we're spending a little less than two point six million dollars annually than Williamson County for transportation. That's the closest size that I could find to compare for a employee model. Hamilton County uses primarily one vendor. Instead of owner-operators, they contract with First Student. They have a hundred and sixty-five routes with First Student, those are all seventy-eight passenger buses, and they have a little over eleven million dollars for those one sixty-five. That equates to sixty-seven thousand dollars per bus, and that doesn't include bus aids, fuel, staff, that doesn't include anything. Using the same number that we have, sixteen million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars for our two hundred and seventy-three contracts, we come in at sixty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven per bus compared to Hamilton County's single vendor of sixty-seven thousand. Run those numbers along with the additional equipment we would need to add at the seventy-eight passenger rate, and we're spending right around three point nine million dollars less than Hamilton is using their single provider, primarily a single provider contract. Knox County, while is a lot larger than we are, sixty thousand, but because of their PRZs, one mile for elementary and then a mile and a half for K through twelve, they transport just under forty-three thousand students, which is right in line with what we have eligible for transportation. Their contractor model is almost identical to ours with the exception being they contract all the way down to sixty-four passenger buses up to ninety-passenger, where we require ninety-passenger. So it was really hard to compare us because of those differences, but what I could do is say, out of the students that are eligible for transportation, how much do they spend? And that was four hundred and fifty-eight dollars per student, and we're at three hundred and ninety-six dollars per student. That's quite a bit of savings that comes out annually, to we're spending about three million dollars, three point one million dollars less than Knox County does. Now, that also includes transportation staff and everything. That's cost per student. So as you can see, we're spending a lot less. We're getting a great value for contractors, and it was kind of eye-opening to look at the numbers when you compare us to other, other districts. I wanted to share, I know you had a lot of questions, I wanted to share what I could to kind of give you some information of what other counties are doing, and see if I can answer any questions that you may have.
Don't have my mic on. Good information, thank you. And I did have an opportunity since our last budget meeting to have a conversation with someone who had spoken with a friend of theirs who's a bus contractor to talk a little bit more about how much their maintenance costs and some real statistics on what it's costing them. So, you know, if we'd had all this information, and I'm not, I'm glad you brought it tonight, thank you, but it certainly would have made the last budget meeting and the, and the request for a vote so quickly when some of us still didn't understand, it would have been very helpful, so thank you for this.
Yes, ma'am.
I have something to say. I just want to say that I have had the privilege of sitting on the bus committee, and I've had kids ride the buses for thirteen years. You are doing an exceptional job, you and your department, to hear the conversation change from the very first meeting with the bus drivers, the contractors, their passion for our students, what they have to deal with on a daily basis, from medical emergencies to going back and picking up students, what they do for us is priceless in my opinion, and I think that you are an exceptional leader in your capacity currently, and I think you're doing a great job with our contractors.
Thank you so much.
So I wanted you to know that.
Appreciate it.
Agree.
Thank you.
These two people you want to hire, they're going to be in the office?
Yes, sir. One will be a compliance, a safety and compliance coordinator, and the second will be a router, strictly a hundred percent, not doing dispatch, not phone calls, not new requests, routing, route design.
Well, I know certain times of the day you can't talk on a telephone in there, so...
It gets busy, yes, sir.
It does. I'd just like to add that this is just another example of how efficient we are as a school district, and transportation has definitely met the challenge of being efficient in what you guys do. I definitely appreciate everything you do for our school system.
You're welcome, and that's due to the people that we have contracted behind the wheel. They're an exceptional group.
I want to say, you know, I send you stuff all the time that I see on Facebook and give you a little heads up, and never once has anyone come back to me and said, hey, he didn't take care of this. So I think that's, that's an exceptional service. And my hesitation on voting for the raises wasn't because I didn't think it was deserved. I just wanted to, that's been mentioned before, that we want to make sure that we look at everybody's, and so that, that was my hesitation in voting for it. Obviously, they do provide a great service, and this is wonderful information, it's wonderful information for those who are watching or listening or who have a question about what exactly we do, because I think there is a gap in what people think we do and what we actually do. And it's, I mean, it's something that we need to do videos on and show people, because I got several comments after we had, I forgot her name, she did her presentation at the last school board meeting, they were like, wow, we, we thought that people just got in trouble for chewing gum, and it's just not that anymore. People's frame of reference needs to be changed. And so I reiterate everybody else's comments, thank you for what you've done.
Oh, you're welcome, it's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Budget improvement, yeah, we need a improvement.
I think we start on page three there. I think this is requested by a board member, state raises, an addition to the two and a half percent, additional two and a half percent, that shows you the cost that we would incur. Of course, we'd do the same thing with classified below that, and that would also show you the cost that would be, we would incur.
And those numbers are just there for information?
Information, right, right. And then down below that is this, this additional mandate that could come into fruition with the additional ninety minutes of required PE by a licensed PE teacher in our elementary schools. Looking over at the, the schools, those would only have, have, one would be five schools only have one PE teacher, and if that comes fruition, there would be five additional positions added at a cost of almost three hundred thousand dollars for a new budget in new, this new requirement. We won't know anything probably until the next two or three weeks or whatever, whatever that, how that goes. They had requested the fiscal impact, and we sent that off to our representatives there so that they can plead on our behalf. And I think page four.
Can we go back to the raise for the teachers?
Mm-hmm.
Just kind of open this discussion with the other people since we had mentioned before that we were going to look at raises for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that our teachers from the state got a two point five, but it actually didn't equate to a two point five because...
That's right.
...what's the insurance and everything. So is there an appetite for any kind of percentage raise?
I think, only two point five percent raise doesn't even equate to two point five. We pick up quite a bit of that.
Probably forty percent.
Percent of it, yeah. When they come out, when, and usually, this is unusual, the governor usually, since Governor Haslam did it, usually comes out with a dollar amount that they're going to be working with, not a percentage amount. If you recall that a few years ago, it was like three or four percent, and, and some of the districts kind of like, because a four percent raise across the board is, is going to have to be supplanted, supplemented by local quite a bit, and I, it's probably a sixty, forty split.
For us, it is.
For us, it is.
Where your state versus your local.
Right. Mm-hmm. Right. So a two point, when we say a two and a half percent raise, we're not getting all of this from the state.
Right, and that's, I know that we're going to fund part of that, but my, my question is, are we going to look at, even if it's not an additional two point five like we did for the bus contractors, can we look at a one point five or something like that for the teachers?
If I may clarify one...
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the lines above the blue, that is the raise generated by the change in the BEP formula. So that's the, that's the piece that about sixty, forty, and other pieces of that raise are scattered in the new positions. That's why it doesn't equal.
So is the number that you're referencing then, the four million, nine ninety-five?
Right.
Other, other parts of that are in other positions through here. So the blue number...
Is all local.
Entirely local funding.
Yeah.
You get no additional state funds to cover any of that.
Right, because that's additional on top of everything else, right. And, and yeah, and I had requested those numbers from you, Mr. Sandvig, I appreciate your bringing them. And to Ms. Sharp's point, and I know there have been so many conversations we've had, not just in this budget session, but, you know, kind of leading up to this, where I know there have been several board members, including myself, that have expressed that we would like to see our teachers and our classified staff see an increase in their pay. So I really would like to know what other board members' thoughts on that are, because I am inclined to say at this juncture that we really should look at doing more than just that state mandated two and a half percent for them. Now, realize that the additional, an additional two and a half percent on top of that's going to be pretty costly, but I just feel like we need to do something. And as far as when we talk about comparing to other counties or other places and what they're doing, Nashville Metro is asking for a ten and a half percent raise for their teachers on their budget this year. Now, I know that's, that's extreme, but again, just trying to make a point here, since we always talk about what the other school systems are doing. Williamson County has requested a three and a half percent on top of the state two and a half percent. And again, when I say state, I understand it's not all state-paid, and then our...
One, just from previous years of dealing, some of the raises that do get tossed about also include the step raises that are built into the salary schedule. So when we're talking two and a half percent, we are not including the step raises built into our salary schedule.
Right.
Some systems, the numbers that get tossed about are including those, so you, you don't know if it's apples to apples until you get in.
Yeah, I don't think in this case that it was, and it was strictly for teachers, but maybe, okay, okay, well, it could be. I know Murfreesboro City is also requesting a little bit more as well, not nearly as significant, about a half a percent. So again, I just, we've got to take care of our teachers, we have all these conversations, and Dr. Anthony Lesserheart having to come in here and share about all the recruiting agony, not just recruiting agony, but training and, and exit interviews and all the teachers that we're losing, and I understand that we may or may not be losing the majority of them for more pay. And I know that the pay is not everything, you know, the really good teachers are teaching because they love it, and that's what they want to do, and that's where they want to be. But those are the teachers we want to keep, and if the money makes a difference, you know, again, I would dare say that a lot of that retraining and effort and dollars, and Dr. Anthony, please correct me if I'm wrong, from, from your perspective, is costing the system an enormous amount of money, and we're, we still have positions going unfilled. So I think it's safe to say that we should look at doing more for our teachers.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that we give an additional one point five percent to our certified and our classified teachers.
Two and a half percent to the teachers and classified, right?
One and a half, one and a half.
One and a half.
The additional one and a half.
Additional, so in, on top of the two and a half?
Additional, yeah.
Or four.
Four.
Four percent instead of two and a half percent overall.
That's across the board, right, for everybody?
Well, because we certainly have had conversations too about classified staff and...
Can you give us ballpark?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Sandvig, while you're working on that, I've got another question, and Ms. Sharp, I fully intend to second your motion, but I would like a little bit of clarification on when we talk about adding this also for classified staff, and I'm sure we talked about this the last meeting, but I just may need my memory refreshed. When we talk about the two and a half percent increase that the state is saying this is what we should do for our teachers, regardless of how much their... do for our teachers, regardless of how much they're paying and we're paying, it's 2.5%. Is that also something that's being offered to all the other staff? I can't remember. Or are we just going strictly by their step raises?
No. In the BEP formula, typically, and I haven't had times to go through typically, when they will, or of late, they have been increased, when they increase the teacher BEP factor by 2.5%, they will increase the other salary factors that are built into that formula by 2.5%. But much more of that on classified staff is local. We get a lower percentage.
So it's more than the 40% that we're offsetting for the teachers? Okay, that makes sense.
And 4,230,000 would include the additional fringes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
4,230,000 about.
That's for certified?
Certified and classified.
So grand total, for an additional 1.5 for all employees? Is that what you're saying?
Okay. An additional percentage and a half, taking to an overall 4% raise, would be about 4,230,000.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Okay, very good. Thank you. Then if I may, unless there's any further discussion, Ms. Sharp, I second your motion.
Got a motion?
Let's have some discussion.
And we're open for discussion.
Mr. Sandvig, I'm not sure that I understood exactly what you just said there, I meant to go. What's the difference between the 2.5 and the 4?
Oh, the difference between the 2.5 is 2.8 million, roughly. 7,48,000 versus 2,430,000.
Okay. Could always amend this motion for more and wait and see what, how it was accepted at our joint meeting. One thing for certain, on our joint meeting with the Health and Ed and the Budget Committee and anybody else that shows up, one thing that is not going to happen that night is they're not going to ask us to raise it anymore.
No, absolutely.
They may ask us to cut it. And we always have the option whether we do that or not. I'm in favor of this, well, I don't know that I am or not. I'd like to make it more.
I think we all would like to make it more.
For the pony, right?
Well, I see no. Let me put it in the form of a motion. And it was, nothing wrong with your motion, Ms. Sharp. But I'd like to amend it to 2.5. Am I making that motion?
In addition.
In addition, not 1.5, 2.5.
Total of five overall?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
That's what you got here, right here currently. In the blue numbers, that's what I show currently. Yes, sir.
We're up 29 million.
Yes, sir.
I guess they start saying whittle, and we'll start whittling. Hey, you, Mr. Jordan made a motion to amend it to 5%. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So does the amendment need a second then? My needs to help me on rules of order here.
I'll second. Ms. Todd, amendment's got a second? So. We all, any other discussion on it? Okay. On the amendment, to make it 5%, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Like our staff deserves it, whether we get it or not. They definitely deserve it. Okay. What are we going to talk about next?
I think the rest of it is page four and page five. Kind of, I think we've already discussed page five. This is the additional 2.5% bus contractors. That total number, am I looking at 823,756?
And again, some of the distortions, because I've included the higher cost already in the
Got you.
New routes. But then when I added the 2.5, I didn't go back and recalculate all those.
Then, of course, the transportation staff. And then on page four, the early instructional specialists going from a 220 onboard as the other coordinators, a 260.
Those items have been in the budget.
Right. These have already been in the budget. So what we're looking at now with these things that we've discussed is bringing the deficit up close to, I mean, the expenditures to, a little over 29?
29, yes, sir.
Okay.
Excuse me. Choked up over that kind of money.
Walking around money, huh? For somebody. Okay.
All right.
Mr. Sandvig, what's the number four item for there on the agenda?
Oh, just if there were any other items that any of the board member wanted to bring up. We may have done enough for the evening.
Looks like there's some good news below number four.
Yes. I wish it were 3.5 to 4 million, but if we, do you want to move down to number five?
Yeah, that's fine. I just
Ms. Moore asked me for that. We don't see much of a savings between 5 and 3.25 average medical insurance increase because that goes into effect, it's only in effect for half of the year. This smaller increase will go into effect in January of 2020 rates. But initially, I was playing around with an 8% increase so that it wound up 3.25. And then we dropped it to 5. And after we got with the, our actuaries, we're able to drop it to 3.25. So this is the difference between 5 and 3.25. We have one more year. In January of 2020, we're dropping to 81% for dependent coverage. And in, so in January of 2021, that will get us down to that 80% mission voted on several years ago.
Are we ready to move? I think so.
As we, as we talked about in our last meeting, I have to file our budgets for the courthouse tomorrow under the Private Act. So these are the revenues, and I will make these changes, expenditures first thing in the morning, and send that out to the courthouse for them to enter in the consolidated.
We can also send an attachment to the board, too.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Number six, is that where we're ready for?
Do we need, do we need to make a motion for this?
It wouldn't hurt.
Make a motion for
Since we've discussed it publicly, I still have my limits.
Right.
Yeah.
So need a motion to approve the budget as is?
Please.
It's amended by
It's amended. I'll make that motion that we approve the budget as amended. Second. Second.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Vote on Fund 143.
Yes, no change from what y'all saw the other night. And I will bring this, the current year amendment forward at a later meeting.
Okay. Need a motion to approve Fund 143?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
And the sheet behind, the budget sheet with the colored headings. I believe it was you, Ms. Moore, who asked, it's hard to tell average pay in that fund because we have subs, we have different lengths of days, we have people coming going. So what I did, I looked at our 2017, 18, and I looked at people who, it appeared they were averaging six to eight hours a day. But I probably have some people, there's some bleed over from the categories. So I'm showing average hours, average pay, six to eight hour day, four to 5.9 hour day, and two to 3.9 hours a day. On the top end, with our managers and some of that, we have some who definitely exceed the 30,000 mark, but it tends to be our managers and some of the assistant managers in bigger schools and some. But I, yeah, it's a much more nebulous number there.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the Central Cafeteria Fund budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Discussion of Fund 177.
177 is our capital projects fund. One of the things we talked about the other night was that, I think it was, was it last year that they, we went from six cents?
With the rollback in the property, right? It dropped to 4.7.
From previously, it was previously six cents.
Yeah.
And we've added two annexes, middle of school, getting ready to add two additional schools. And we're still setting where we are now. You know, and of course, Mr. Lee, I think he's shed a light on a few things as far as what we've got going forward. And, you know, one of the things, it was discussed that we probably maybe request to get the penny back and maybe add some as we go along, additional pennies as we go along. Not only are we talking about our roofs, but we also are talking about our HVAC systems that we're looking at. And, you know, we did have that issue that cropped up about a month ago at Blackman High School. It could have been, you know, it could have been a major issue in terms of getting it up and running. And with Blackman opening in 2000, as opposed to some of these schools that are much older than that, I think, you know, the atmosphere in which the kids are in as far as learning, you know, I mean, it's not just, we're not just talking about a comfort level. We're talking about a level where they can get the most out of the opportunity to learn. I think we've seen some, Mr. Lee and myself both visiting some of the campuses in the summer times, and we can see, we've seen some things that is concerning. But, you know, this is something that we can either, this is something we can meet as a county where we try to get this maintenance fund up somewhat, or perhaps maybe in the future have to go and actually borrow, which is not
In the past.
Yeah, we've done it in the past. And we know when we go to borrow, you know, depending on our project, we're going to share some money. And what we're trying to do is be proactive. So that's just a thought to throw out.
You know, Mr. Burlock, I'm really glad you brought that up because it actually was one of the few things that was kind of on my laundry list of things that I really wanted to talk about last night because since Mr. Lee presented at the last meeting, we talked about all these different issues with the HVACs and the roofs and everything else. I haven't been able to get it off my mind. It concerns me tremendously that we don't have enough money to do those repairs and upkeep on our schools. So, you know, not having any answers, just kind of putting out the question there, is there anything else we can do to find the money to help fund those projects? Because it's, I mean, to me, that's mission critical. It's kind of like getting rid of portables.
I, the final packet you have is kind of the raw list of Mr. Lee's projects that he's turned in. I, and Ms. Nolan has been too busy with the county budget for me to meet with her, and I've been too busy today. But some of these are not items that we would charge to the Capital Projects Fund because of the nature of that we have charged to the GPS fund. And a few of them, some of the safety items, I tend to simply have in the GPS budget. So we might be able to take some of them out here. We also are waiting to see what we get for our safe, safety equipment grant, I guess it is, from the state. I'm hoping week after next, maybe we'll have some details on that. There are some things we just simply don't know that we, there are some things we can move off here. I'm sure Mr. Lee can come up with more than enough to replace them.
Mm-hmm. But there are some big budget items on here.
Yeah.
I'll agree, over $100,000, you know, that would fall under the capital projects.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Lee, I know you spoke on this, or somebody asked the question the last time, talking about the whole, excuse me, energy efficient school programs and that kind of thing. Then, is there anything at all that they're willing to do? Like, for instance, with the, we've got some of these old systems, I guess, the one at Central Magnet, and I think there are some others, that could be replaced using some of those funds? Or is that not something that those grants or funds are available for? I just want to understand it a little better.
Maybe find one of the smaller projects that fit their criteria. And we are looking for some of those
Okay.
We can fit in. You brought up Central Magnet. If we were to get funding, it would be one.
I see. Okay, we couldn't get multiple?
Because it's going to be large enough that we're not going to be able to get multiple through EESI.
I see. Okay.
The EESI was set up as kind of a sustaining fund, and they've not been as successful at getting additional monies, kind of like a bucket of money that they would loan. And then as money and this three quarters to 1% interest come in, more funds will become available to loan. But in, we were fortunate, I think one year we got well over 2 million, I think. We got, other systems weren't applying, so we were able to get a larger grant that year. It's hard to get, I think their package, it was 30-some million that they've got. But we got 2 million one year was
The other districts caught on. And they also look at it, unfortunately, like some of the other things, they look at it based on our ability to pay.
Ah, gotcha.
Which also penalizes us. So it kind of kicks us down the priority list now. We, I don't want to use the term low hanging fruit. We were proactive and got in early before everybody caught on. Now that everybody's caught on.
Too many competitors?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So it kind of hurts us. So we are trying, like I said, we're looking at the $500,000 to $600,000 with our LED lighting for the parking lots. And that's nothing to sneeze at. That's a good return on our investment, but
But we have not included any of that yet in the budget because it's too early.
We don't know whether we can get it or not.
Okay. So for instance, those funds or that grant or wherever that money is coming from for LED lighting for the parking lots, that's not something that could be transferred over to replacing an HVA system, which in my opinion would be a lot more critical than, it's strictly for that type of, okay?
You can't move it around.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I can't imagine that they went and do something because the residential units are going to be in the same, I mean, my air conditioner is going to have to be replaced. So it's not, you know, the schools, we can't be the only school that's in that situation. We can't be the only district.
And we're obviously not, but no. And I think
Something's going to have to come up Something's going to have to come up somewhere.
One of the things I think we've done, and probably, you know, we've really, with our maintenance staff, we've really made things last a long time. Now, there's some good about that, and then there's this coming to a head, and it can be some challenges about it. And I think where we are currently is we're entering in that, in that phase. And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Mr. Lee, but I know you and I have had this same conversation. And like I said, it's helped us along the way, it's provided us a buffer in terms of trying to make things stretch a lot longer than what we normally would. It's kind of like our per pupil expenditure. You know, we say that we spend less than $1,300 on, than the state average somewhere in that neighborhood, per pupil expenditure. That's good to say that, but keep bringing in thousands of kids every year and see how that puts a strain on your budget and the strain on the effectiveness that you're providing in the classroom.
I try to maintain that. Well, and I would applaud our maintenance department for all those efforts in keeping those things running that long. But yeah, when you get to a point where you're putting Band-Aids on things or making triage decisions as to which school gets an HVAC system when they both need one, yeah. We definitely need to look at anywhere we can to help with that.
I have a question for clarification. So when you say major HVAC components, we're looking at just improving them so they last longer, we're not?
We may be able to replace some. We did at Central Magnet last year, half a million dollars, just to take care of the auditorium. We also did a half a million dollar project at Oakland High School. That took care of the main gym only.
In classrooms.
So, when you start hearing these numbers, it's, it's big numbers to take care of a school. I mean, just like I said, those, just a couple of components can run you hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And when you have a budget that has about 4.6 million in revenue coming in to it.
It's an easy one for you, that one out.
It's hard to get those projects, and that's what's happened. And I even looked this year, and we discussed a roof that's not leaking, but it needs replacing. We, Jeff and I stood in the hall one day, and I said, I'll move it, it's not leaking this year. We've got to fix some other things because we've got 47 campuses, 30 of them are over 25 years old. And I've got, and I say, I'm sorry, we have four and a half million dollars. And if you look at that and you take $2 million out of it to do roofs which are in dire need, we're, I don't want to sound like I'm ringing the bell, but we're 10 years, we're close to 10 schools behind. And to re-roof a Oakland High School, you're talking 6 to 7 million. So we're doing pieces of it at a time. When I first came to work here 12 years ago, Mr. Hodger will remember, the library at Oakland High School, every time it rained, we had numerous buttons, we had plastic hanging in it trying to save our books. And we fought that for a year before we got the money to re-roof just the section over the library. And it was 300, $400,000 back then. So I say that to say this, I'm on the last section at Oakland High School this year. It's taken 12.
12 years later.
To re-roof that campus, well, that roof's only going to last 20 years.
The Golden Gate, so as soon as you're finished painting it, you start over.
You're, that's, and when you take the 2 million out to do roofs, that leaves 2 and a half million to do all the other things we have to do for 47 schools.
Mr. Estes, I believe you knew the librarian, didn't you?
I've moved books a few times.
I got to where I didn't want to go in.
This is a budget, to me, you know, when we're talking our, a reasonable wish list, we truly could use 10 cents from the property tax. And that would not cover all of the projects we really need to be looking at. But it would be that kind of a large, that would be, well, it would be an unshared, that'd be about 9 million. And we could spend that with ease every year.
It would be a step in the direction that allow us, once we get in a position, I don't want to use the term caught up. We get in a little bit better position, kind of funds, that would allow us to maybe keep it.
When Dr. Bullen proposed this, when BEP 2 came in '07, '08, our hope was that we would be able to use some of this money, build it up, and do a small addition or a school renovation. We haven't been able to, we have not been able to catch up on the maintenance projects. It's great that we have it, it really is, but.
You add more schools and they get older, you're not keeping up, I mean, it's going to occur.
Yeah, well, the schools that were 10 years old at that point are now 20 plus years old, yeah.
Well, that 1.4% that they took away from us would make what, 1.2 million now?
Yeah, yeah, and they gave us, we got the same dollars, but it's just a dollar basis, we need.
It's kind of been stagnant though. I mean, it's, you know, we haven't lost as much, but it's been stagnant.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, I'm sorry, I'm catching up here. So you're saying 10 cents from the property tax would do it? So what do we currently get?
We get 4.7 cents.
Okay.
Yeah, after the reappraisal, our old six cents dropped to 4.7. And when you look at this year's, that, it's the page before the Capital Project Sheet, when you look at this year's budget, it is higher. We took a million out of that, we were able to take a million out of that ending fund balance for more safety projects, which is good, the access systems. We didn't get enough with our state grant, 3 million. And then the other piece we have with this fund, which distorts when you look at year to year budget, this is one of those accounting auditing weirdities. At the end of June, we have to liquidate all unfinished purchase orders. Well, maintenance is going hard on getting summer projects done. So what we do then, we take an amendment, so we liquidate all the purchase orders, then that money rolls to fund balance. We do an amendment taking it back out of fund balance and increasing our budget again. It's just the way it rolls, it's different than our other budgets.
I think part of this, if I remember right, and Dr. Bullen and I had many discussions about it, was to keep the county commission from having to decide and for us having to go down every time we had a roof.
Right.
Like Oakland's library that fell in practically, and to keep us out of their hair, asking them for $500,000 or whatever it took, and we would already have the money. And gave, I assume, the school board, but in actuality, probably Gary Clardy, the authority, if you will, I assume with the director, I'm sure, to decide, well, here's what we need to do with this project. And he stayed away from the county commission who had already appropriated the money.
We are, we are required to file a list of what projects, what schools make up how we will use this money. And then as we did last month, one month before, to change from Central to Blackman for that half million dollar chiller, we have to take that change in project forward to health and ed and budget approval. That's kind of quirky, and it is reported in our annual financial statements, there is detail on these projects. What the budgeted projects were, what we actually did, so.
As far as heat and air is concerned, Mr. Lee, maybe you cannot answer this, but did, did Central move, are they number one on the priority list for the school, or is that an unfair question?
They're number one for getting another, getting a chiller.
Okay.
For right now.
In this budget, they're number one. I've got them and one other project at Oakland Middle, that's all the funding. I had to say aye, Mr. Sandic and I, I'm learning, and I've thrown a, well, I wouldn't say I've thrown a fit. He's explained it different ways to me to try and get me to understand. Why I can't do some.
Minor fit.
But it's.
So those are literally the only ones that are reflected in this budget that we're getting ready to take to the commission?
No, no, no.
As far as HVAC.
Yeah, as far as HVAC.
As far as HVAC, yes.
Okay.
One of the other two schools that you mentioned the other night, and you said it two, three times, naturally.
The two pipe system.
Yes, sir.
Either hot or it's cold.
Yes, sir.
Smyrna Elementary, Central Magnet, I've drawn a blank.
Well, I don't remember either, you told us.
I just drew one.
It would be one of the older schools though.
But I'm not 100% sure.
Oh, I believe you said John Coleman Annex.
Yes, John Coleman.
Yeah, okay.
It's still that way as well. And we wait as long as we can when we switch.
Right. And one of the things in Mr. Lee's defense that he's got to deal with this year, we have different pots of money, and the rules that govern how we use them vary. He hasn't had to deal with that in the past. I've been the one getting to tell him, no, you can't, or we can do it.
And I always ask why.
Grateful you don't have federal money.
So we have 11 schools here on the list, only two of these we're going to address, right?
Yes.
Should there be more on the list? Or is this, what we feel?
Yes, the answer is yes, but we, that money's not adequate. So that's why there's no money beside it. The money for those is much larger.
Is there any way we can put a dollar figure beside each one of these, just so we can see what it would take?
I can re, all I've got to do is resend you the other file. Right, you, I think.
Because I've made changes to your file, and I don't want to have to, yeah, we need.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I can pull out the HVAC problem. That's what you're asking, correct? Yes, sir, I have dollar figures.
I mean, I'd like to see a dollar figure beside each one of these, you know.
But we do, in that HVAC series, just talking about the school's aging, we have Barfield, Rock Springs Elementary, Cedar Grove. Those were late 90s, early, maybe, I think just, I think all three of those were late 90s schools. Last Cassus was a mid 90s school. Yeah, those are the schools that we're seeing creep up on these lists now because they are 20 and more years old.
And we're not talking about, we're only talking about certain units within these schools. We're not talking about the whole overhaul of the school, we're only talking about certain units. So I am going to ask, because I was at Riverdale not too long ago, and they didn't have air conditioning, and I don't see them on this list. So is that not something that?
That was a particular unit that was out that day, and they were working on it that day.
So it's back in, so they're not on this?
No, ma'am, they're not.
Okay.
They're further down the list. These are in worse shape, or in, they're in need more than Riverdale.
So this would be then essentially the urgent list, not the.
Get ahead list.
Fully functioning, wearing good, the bridge is completely painted, we don't have to paint it.
Would you like me to email you that? Paul, I can give you that information.
You have a list there?
Yes, sir, I do.
Well, we can plug the figures down on what we got.
Sturisboro, 1.2 million. Barfield, Cedar Grove, Kitchell, Last Cassus, Rock Springs Elementary, Rock Bell Elementary, all 1.2 million. Each.
I got one.
Smyrna Elementary, 2.5 million, Central Magnet, 2.5 million.
With those kind of numbers, how are we ever going to catch up? I don't see us ever proposing a budget here that's going to take care of that kind of money.
You're exactly right, we're never going to, I'd say anywhere close to catching up.
There is something we've discussed.
There's two ways of looking at this, actually, there's three. I wasn't prepared to go into that tonight, but I'll give you the brief version. If you take this money and we did an LED lighting package with it, which would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 13 million, the LED lighting package, which would be changing out all the lighting, sports lights, everything, in all of our campuses. We could save somewhere between 2.5 and 3 million dollars a year in energy. The LED lighting, and as we upgrade these HVAC systems, we're also going to pick up some energy savings as well. Because these buildings are so outdated, so high and so bad, even if you put a new unit in, we're not gaining conductive for the count. By year three, we're beginning to see that savings come back. There's a couple of ways for us to look at it. We do not need to split the LED lighting separate from the HVAC. If we do, the money savings is, the big money savings is in the LED lighting. So we've got to be able to harness that money to help us pay for these areas. Over time, if we split them up, we're not going to be able to get there. So we would need to either call it a project, go borrow, go to the county commission like a school project, tell them we need, and now we'll pick the numbers. Don't anybody know we have 20 million dollars, 25 million dollars? And borrow that money to go do this. And then begin to get ahead, get our 4.7 up to somewhere over the next three to four years, get us up to 10%. Get these critical ones off our list. And then buy us two or three years to get that money up to where we could then use a million and a half dollars, two million dollars in this Capital Projects. We can start beginning to chip away at those other schools. Or we do half a school a year, we do two at a time, but we get it half one year and half the next. The other option is we don't borrow the money from the county, and we go out for RFQ with an energy management system. And they're basically, basically a private EDSI. Would that be a good way to describe it, Mr. Sandic? There's companies that come in that help you design this, and they'll loan us the money, for lack of a better term, over 15 to 20 years. And we pay them 3 or 4 million dollars a year for the next 20 years, and you don't have to go to the county office, you don't have to, it's like going to the bank or the, that's another, it's a simplified version.
We would have to increase our budget in order to fund that.
Yes, that is correct.
One of the challenges I, we have to face in dealing with the energy management systems and energy efficiency and all that is your savings is, it is an, it is an engineering calculation. When the engineers come back and assess and evaluate, were you successful? Their savings is based on, well, you should have this light on so many hours a day, if we change this power, it's a theoretical calculation. When, my frustration is when I'm going in and looking at actual usage.
Kilowatt hours.
Kilowatt hours, cubic feet of natural gas, whatever, I do not see that much savings, I don't. But it meets the, that, the calculation is met. And part of that, there are always the challenges, I'm not very happy with weather normed comparisons either. It's something, but.
It's a convoluted way to.
It is.
Difficult to understand.
Yeah.
My, I'm a number realist, so I'm going to measure my energy consumption. Pre-upgrade and post-upgrade. And then I can tell you whether it worked or didn't, and there's ways of doing that. I can measure it at the meter, and I'm going to measure it for six months prior. I'm not going by my electric bill, I want raw data. I want to make a change, and then I want to compare it to that same six months that this year and look at my kilowatt uses. Now, in a high school, that becomes a little bit more difficult, as Mr. Spurlock can allude. Those places, there's something.
Only four seven.
Evidence, not the same any two weeks out of the year. But our elementary.
But our elementaries and middle schools, we can get a whole lot registering notes to get, to get a true reading.
Now, we have, for our energy efficiency, borrowings that we have done in the last we have paid some of them off completely. We have assured the county commission, we would cover the interest and the principal out of our GPS budget. That's the debt service we see. The other debt services, all reported at the county level for school construction. The EESI projects we've had, we have been able to kind of tie the repayment, length of the repayment, to the payback period. That's something I really think would be wise for y'all to try to continue doing. I, I strongly advise against stretching out the payment beyond that payback period, because then you're digging a hole for yourself.
I think currently, though, it's the LED lights in the schools that gives us the quicker payback over a period of time.
Yes, right, oh, yes.
I mean, the, the, the lights in the, will save us, the lights in the, the parking lots and stuff will, will save money, but not over the, the amount over, it'll be over a longer period of time. And, and that's what we, we've discussed there, too, and we've actually, you know, I mean, that's still, it's not cheap. No, it's not cheap, even the ones that we would have to do. But that's where we get more bang for our buck.
I got a question. On this, when we vote on Fund 177, is that where we need to add something to this four point six cents?
Well, I think it would be entirely appropriate to have a, a request that the commission look at, that we, we need a, an alternative funding source, even more pennies, or we need some kind of borrowed funds so that we can make some progress on this, absolutely. For, as far as the budget, this is the revenue we plan, we anticipate having at this point. But, absolutely.
Mr. Lee, what, based on the information you've given us, what do you think would be a good figure to look at?
As far as this fund?
Well, I, I know the value you give us, the additional, I'm finding it thirteen point four, I know we're not going up that, but I mean, you talking about trying to up this thing to a million, or?
What about pushing for ten cents in total?
Going from less than five to ten?
Yeah.
How much revenue would that give us?
Well, that would take us over nine million, because these funds are not currently shared. And, yeah, it's, it gets us in the right direction. No, we still have lots of other things out there. But it's really more where this fund, if this, this fund had grown to that level over the years, that's, that would be more in line with the types of projects it was designed to do, because we weren't talking HVAC systems and some things, some of these major projects.
And, Mr. Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, too, some of these projects, I know they don't rise above the hundred thousand, but collectively do our safety things, too, are they not?
Some are, yes, sir.
Humilative?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we've got, we've got, we've got safety issues in, in just about, when you, when you list this door replacement here at these schools here,
Yes, sir.
is this not a safety issue?
Yes, sir, it's safety, yes, sir. That's where I would classify it. You'll also notice a lot of those schools are the same ones that you saw, but they're, they're common schools that were built on the same pattern. I don't know that I don't go into too much detail tonight, but those doors are, the hardware on them, you can't get in them.
Right.
And they exceeded their life expectancy. We're robbing off one door to get another door to work. And we need to be doing serious replacements. We've started some at some schools, but you're looking at, I call them doors openings. Most of these doors are a pair. So, you have two doors, and you're looking at three to four thousand dollars an opening. And you take, a lot of these elementaries, they were built with that long hallway, it's all glass, windows, and every third opening is a, is a door.
So, there may be twenty or thirty doors on one elevation. And when you've got, that means doors, you just can't get that up here.
Mr. Lee, how much are these ballards? Do you know that? That may be Mr. Graham.
The what now?
How much are the ballards, the target balls?
They're each
Each.
They're around twenty-seven to twenty-eight hundred dollars a piece installed. But we've moved them out, down the line.
Good, thank you.
Great. I don't, I don't think that they're...
In fact, they're in, they're already...
Deep down the line? So, we add to this, and, and I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask anyway, because I know you all always go, of course, to help with the budget. I'm assuming that Mr. Lee will be with you, and he'll be able to help elocute, because, for instance, hearing the story about Oakland and the twelve-year history and everything, I mean, I didn't know that. And so, those are the kind of things, I guess, will, obviously, will be shared with the commission, with health and ed and budget, when you go to them with this.
I kind of like the idea of trying, trying to budget and borrow a very large amount, try to catch up. I, I don't know if we, that would ever see the light of day or not, but I, you know, I it, it seems like to me that this, this, this running around from one small emergency to another, we'll call them small, I'm not sure there are small emergencies, but one project to another, hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand here, three hundred thousand there, and running from one to another, one school to another, is, in a way, well, it's not very productive, and just, and I, I'm not sure that that's, I'm saying that right, but it just seems to me like that's not as effective as it might be. I, I wanted to ask Mr. Hodge, who was, Mr. Hodge, were you thinking about five cents at once, or were you thinking about a percent every year for the next five years, or? What do you think?
I really don't know. I mean, as far as, sort of like Mr. Sandig's idea, asking for ten cents, and then go from there. I just brought it.
I asked Mr. Lee what he thinks we didn't think to get started with.
I think the ten percent number, based on where we are now, if we were to get somewhere close to caught up, would allow us to possibly stay up, or at least have a better chance. You know, for, for three, four, or five years, and then it probably needs to incrementally go up every so many years, and it, that's the thing, it hasn't gone up in a number of years.
I think, you know, we're just, I think in big scope of things, I don't think you're gonna get caught up. We're talking about heating and air right here, and we're not talking about anything else. You know, I like the ten percent.
Been twelve years since the Oakland library?
When it was pouring rain in it, yeah.
Right.
Started in the nineties.
I mean, that's when I came here. It, it was going on
Couldn't fix.
Three, four, or five years before that.
I was the principal when it was actually finished.
Finished. Butch Vaughn fought.
It, it was more than a la, it was more than a library. I mean, you walked down the hall dodging garbage cans.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
For a lot of years.
That story alone is, is telling, isn't it? I mean, when it says it takes, it would, it would have taken the entire budget of, of the nickel we're talking about to, well, it, it wouldn't have done it, would it?
It would have.
Would have fixed the library, but it, but...
The, the five million we get now, twelve years ago, may have re-roofed that whole school.
Okay. Today, no.
Today, no, sir. Be probably forty percent more than that, forty to fifty percent.
So, it's seven million?
Yes, sir.
So, I see, yeah, where you've noted what some of these costs were, maybe back when we first looked at them, which is pretty valuable, too. Like, for instance, I'm looking at, if you can, an elementary sewer, we'd have to pay a hundred thousand now, would have been eighty K is, is what you're showing here in these numbers. Is that mostly due to construction and labor costs, or?
Materials.
It is material, okay.
Construction-wise, steel, things like that, where the national average goes up three to four percent a year is our, they call the gross national average inflation rate. Construction products, namely steel, has been going up at fifteen to twenty percent a year. And that's just one component.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion on, on nine. Is that, is that what we need?
That's correct.
Well, I'll make a motion that we request a, a raise in this fund from whatever it is, four point seven evidently, to ten cents.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. A motion to raise Fund 177 to ten cents. And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
And, y'all will trust my discretion. I will talk to Ms. Nolan in the morning. She may feel that it is better to go ahead and increase the budget request. I don't know. And show it as a deficit on the capital projects, but I'll, I'll talk to her and get her feelings before we, and we'll let, let y'all know.
We would take, we could go down to eight cents then, right?
Right. Well, pay more trustees' commissions, so it comes to the county.
I reckon we could get that old trustee to bring some of his commission out. Okay.
We're gonna find some support for that. Now, now, whether there'll be eleven votes for it or not, I don't know, but when, when you look at at borrowing and that hated word, interest, and you look at how fast we're growing and the number of schools, and how this just accumulates and accumulates, there's a lot to be said for, for what we just passed, I, I think. I feel like there is. Now, whether they can see past that or not, I guess we'll find out.
I want to thank everybody for a good meeting. Hopefully, we can get everything we asked for, right?
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Next meeting's May thirteenth, budget meeting. Work session Wednesday night.
Yeah, our next budget board meeting.
Next budget meeting.
Next budget's thirteenth.
That's, thought we met tomorrow night.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
Yeah. Wednesday and Thursday of this week.
Okay. How many schedules do we have out there?
Thank you, Mr. Spurlock, for keeping us straight.
All right. We'll see everybody Wednesday night. We're adjourned.